Good evening, everyone. It's 6:01 and we're going to call to order this June 5th, 2018, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin this meeting like we do every meeting with invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, Councilman Mayberry is going to offer our prayer and the pledge is going to be led by Councilman Alexander. If you'd stand with me, please.
Shall we pray? Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we come to you around your throne of grace, asking you for your forgiveness and thanking you, Heavenly Father, for all the many wondrous blessings that you bestow upon each and every one of us. Bless our blessings upon each one here, its family represented here this evening, to continue blessing upon our community, our state, and certainly our nation, Heavenly Father. Be with those, Heavenly Father, who are undergoing different tragedies around the world. Comfort them, protect them, Heavenly Father. As we conduct the business of the evening, Heavenly Father, we ask thee to give us wisdom and guidance and counsel, Heavenly Father, through imparting of your wisdom to us, that the decisions we make be made according to your holy will. All these things we ask and pray in the blessed name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the roll call. Mrs. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please. Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Overton is absent, but we do have a quorum, mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. There are no minutes provided this evening, so we'll move along to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting when members of the public can come forward and address items that are on this evening's agenda. Now, I would advise you all that if you're interested in speaking about Langley Hall, there are four public hearings about Langley Hall, so I would wait, I would ask you to wait and comment on that during the public hearings, but if you have a comment on anything else, now would be your time to come forward and address the council. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and say what you want to say, and keep your comments limited to five minutes. You may come forward at this time. Public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. Okay, I see no one wishing to speak, so I'm going to declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And it's now time for mayor's comments. I do have a few items to advise you of. There is a fishing derby coming up at Lot 4 Park, and that is going to be this Saturday, the night, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. It's free, and people can sign up and bring their children through the civic center. The classic car cruising is happening again this weekend, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall. Next Thursday is the official Flag Day. Next Saturday, there will be a Flag Day ceremony sponsored by the Gallatin Elks Lodge and the Boy Scouts here at the City Hall parking lot at 10:00 a.m. And then on the 21st of June, we're going to be starting our third Thursday series, and the parks will kick that off this year. Also, I want to tell you that this Saturday is Ms. Kitchell's birthday, so wish her a happy birthday. At this time, I would like to ask a very special person and his family to join me at the podium. I'd like to bring forward Mr. Stan Waltney at this time. Come over here by me. We have the opportunity this evening to recognize someone who has been very special to the city of Gallatin. Not a lot of people have the commitment or get the opportunity to spend half the number of years that he has spent with the city of Gallatin. But Mr. Waltney retired from the city of Gallatin on May 31st after, get this, 46 years of service. So...
Wow.
And Stan, on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city, on behalf of our citizens, I want to say a heartfelt thank you. I know that you have made the difference in many lives. Those are the firefighters that you have mentored, those are the citizens you have served, and you've certainly made our community a better place. So, we love you, we appreciate you, we want to recognize your service. I do have... This, may it always bring good memories, and we have a certificate... Whoops. Recognizing your 46 years of service. Says 45 years, I may need to change that. I can redo that, I need to. Forty-five years of dedicated service with the city of Gallatin Fire Department with appreciation, respect, and gratitude for your service, signed by all of us. And so, we do appreciate you, and we hope your retirement years are filled with lots of great health, happiness, and I know your family's going to be glad to have some time with you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's recognize Mr. Waltney. For anybody that may be watching at home and thinks I'm just dazed and confused on watching Stan visit with all the department heads. Okay, I think that concludes the mayor's portion of the meeting. Before we do go into the regular agenda, I have two items I want to discuss. One, I've been asked to move up item number 13 to the top of the agenda. It should be a pretty quick item, and there are people here from Nashville that probably would like to get home earlier rather than later. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll move back to item number one. I also want to advise any of the residents and any other interested parties who may be here with concerns about Langley Hall. I have been advised that there's going to be a request to defer that item. That will not affect the public hearing, it will still happen this evening, but if we get to the item and there is a motion to defer and that is done, I just want you to know that that could potentially happen. I don't want you to feel slighted in any way or surprised by that. And the issue is, I understand, that there has not yet been a meeting between the developer or the landowner and the Haganese Corporation. They have spoken, but they have not yet had a meeting, so that would be the reason why. So, with that, we'll move into the regular agenda, and we will start with item number 13. And Vice Mayor Overton is not here this evening, and so I'm going to ask, if you would, Councilman Mayberry, to take that item number 13.
Yes, ma'am. This is resolution number R-1806-40, and this is a resolution adopting payroll deductions for the Tennessee Stars College Savings 521 program and the Able, A-B-L-E, Tennessee program. Motion to approve.
Yeah, and I'll just correct that as 529 program. Mr. Alexander pointed that out. And so, I have a motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilwoman Love, was that correct? Okay, is there any discussion? This is resolution R-1806-40. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. That now brings us to item number one, which is public hearing on resolution R-1712-64. And Councilman Camp, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution of the city of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a portion of 1 parcel, tax map 134, parcel 001.03, consisting of 28.62 plus or minus acres, and providing for an effective date. So moved. For an all public hearing opening.
Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open on resolution R-1712-64. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward and do so at this time. Again, introduce yourself and give us your address, please. Public hearings now open. Okay.
Maybe it's where that property is?
This is that parcel, the Langley Hall parcel. It is that parcel. All of these public hearings relate to that, so it would be proper to speak to any. I mean, we'll have four, so...
Does Bill want something?
Did I screw something up? Sure.
Yes, council. Bill McCord, city planner. I want to clarify that the plan of service and the annexation is only for the south 28 acres. It does not include all the 77 acres that's part of the Langley Hall.
It's already zoned.
Yes, it's only the south, what I call the south 28 acres.
But I think any concerns about the entire development would be appropriate, in my opinion. So, you may come forward and speak at this time, if you want. It doesn't, I mean, it really doesn't matter which public hearing you speak under, as long as it's relevant to that Langley Hall.
My name's Linda Sutter. I live at 709 Coles Ferry. Really, just a couple of points to reemphasize that we've discussed before when we've been in these gatherings. I have pictures that I shared the last time. I don't have copies, but I've got the originals. I'll be glad to pass those around. That was just what you'd call an average rainstorm during the month of December. I think it was Christmas week, so you can see the drainage issues that there are on the property. Planning Commission has already looked at this once, considered it carefully, did not recommend it, so I think that's worth remembering. And one other, just final, really not a small point, but I think it's a major point. It is within your power to forever alter that piece of land, for the good or for the negative, and it will impact a lot of people, so I just think that's worth remembering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Could it be best to speak on all these at once, at Langley Hall?
Whichever is your preference, it doesn't matter to us at all.
We're kind of confused back here.
Well, I mean, it would be redundant to say the same thing on all four, and that's why I say any of them would be appropriate, because your concerns are going to be, we probably know what the concerns are, they're going to be brought forward, and I can't say they're specific to one piece of this issue or another, so...
I'm Linda Brown. I live at 504 Coles Ferry Road. My family moved to Coles Ferry Road in December of 1973. In 1980, the Haganese Mechanical Plant went fully online, and currently, 300,000 tons of scrap metal a year are processed into ferrous powder, which is used not only in production of parts for automobiles, but many other products. While the official address of the plant is Steam Plant Road, the back of the plant is visible from Coles Ferry and shares a boundary with the development being proposed by Oak Tree Properties. The process of manufacturing iron creates noise that, according to the World Health Organization, is between 88 and 103 decibels. For that reason, metal processing plants are designed to release noise out of concern for the safety of their employees. The World Health Organization states that regular exposure to environmental noise causes hearing impairment, hypertension, ischemic heart disease, changes to the immune system, and birth defects, as well as being annoying. Unlike many other manufacturers that operate 8 to 5, 5 days a week, Haganese is online 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Because the process of manufacturing metal requires massive amounts of electricity, their peak manufacturing is during the off-hours of other corporations. The drawing of the PUD being proposed by Oak Tree Properties shows lots 23 through 39 sharing a boundary with the Haganese factory. Using the scale on the plan of these lots are approximately 600 feet from the plant, with these lots being separated from the plant by tight forder buffer yards. With Google Maps as reference, it appears that the 40-foot buffer yard will utilize an existing tree line on the property. While using an existing tree line in a buffer yard is an accepted practice, undergrowth cannot be included as part of the buffer yard, and additional plannings will be necessary. Keep in mind that the tree line is currently composed of deciduous trees, and during the winter months will be less effective as a barrier. The American Society of Planning Official states that planting trees as noise abatement is useless unless the noise is marginal, and then for them to be effective, they must be dense, and height is a factor. The addition of buffer yards will have little effect on the noise abatement of this development. The noise being generated by Haganese has been compared to the noise from the airport and the noise of trains. Please keep in mind that residents of Langley Hall Estates will be affected by all three of these sources of noise. However, the noise from trains and planes is brief and subject to the Doppler Effect. The noise from Haganese is constant, and there is no relief from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joyce Lillard, and I live at 506 Coles Ferry Road. I'm concerned that this development is going to decrease the value of my property. My house is 2,600 square feet, and my lot is 1.4 acres. Most of the homes that are proposing this development will be much smaller square footage and nowhere near the acreage. When I expressed this concern to Clay Haynes with Oak Tree Partners, his response was that people no longer want large homes or acreage. However, when my son sold his home back in April of this year, he did not look for smaller homes or lots, instead, he purchased a bigger home and a much bigger lot. My other concern is about the increase in traffic that will be generated by this development. In the last year or so, we have already seen an increase in traffic on Coles Ferry. My primary concern is the sharp curve at Coles Ferry and Lake Wind Drive. I work on the square here in Gallatin, and when I drive to work and have to go around that curve, I've almost been hit several times by vehicles that are going too fast and come over onto my side of the road when coming around that curve. I feel the road not only needs to be wider, but the issue of that curve would also need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lillard.
I'm Elaine Donahoe. I live at 518 Coles Ferry Road, and I'm basically here to talk about the rezoning and also the consideration of the master plan. The property in question is not conducive for housing of any kind. There are sinkholes, caves, flooding on a good bit of the property. My husband actually played in those caves as a child. Last meeting, we passed out pictures of this property after one day of rain, flooding everywhere. The topography of this parcel of land has been brought into question several times, and also the fact that the property backs up to a major industrial site, Haganese. They have even spoken against this, as we have. Do you really want children to play near this industrial site? I certainly wouldn't want my grandchildren to be near it. This was voted down by the Planning Commission by a vote of 42, the two being the only members of the commission who were also on city council. The type of houses he wishes to build are not in character with our homes. Not necessarily that they have to be as big or as big a lot, but at least be nice and not houses made out of hardy board or siding. It was mentioned one time at a meeting of this, another development out on the Gateway, and they did not want to use much brick. However, our mayor indicated that because that was the first place that people saw, that it needed to be brick. So, I feel like we deserve the same consideration. Okay. You want to add 170 new homes to this area and have them access their development from Coles Ferry, which is only 18 feet in width and cannot handle another 400 to 500 or more cars. Even now, try pulling out of your property already on Coles Ferry, especially in the morning and in the evening, as it is a direct route for TVA and for people accessing the Newton Lane area. I never allowed my grandchildren to ride bikes on the street or even play in the front yard, because I have seen too many cars lose control on that straightaway and run into yards and take out mailboxes. Not a road for children to play or be near. Previously, Mr. Haynes suggested that these homes would be for empty nesters. I am an empty nester, and I do not plan to leave the home that we lovingly built and plan to stay there as long as humanly possible. And if I were to want something, I would not be looking for a single-family home, I would be looking for something that I had no upkeep with. Not that that's in my future or in my plan. Also, we have children in these homes that'll be moving in. They're going to be zoned for either Guild or Venus Stewart Elementary School. They're already overwhelmed with students there. Where are they going to go to school? There's no place to build a school, and no plans to build a school. Guild is where my husband went to school, and we are reaching 70 this year. I'm just asking that you consider our feelings and our thoughts and the fact that this land is just not made for land use. It's been great as an agricultural source, and we enjoy that, and we have agricultural land. We enjoy that. But I know we're going to get some houses, but I'm asking that you at least make them something that we can live with and something that is conducive to what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
I'm Robert C. Brown. I live at 504 Coles Ferry Road, also own land in the city, so I do pay taxes to this group. This audit has been going on for almost a year, and I believe all the residents has provided enough evidence that prove that this development is not suitable for PUDs. Concerns about flooding, eroding capable of being used as a connector road, and the health concerns related to the proximity to the steel mill seem to be falling on deaf ears. I mean, we've been speaking about this for a year. We heard that one of the property owners at the beginning of this process, that this was a done deal. We went into this process believing that he was wrong, and we hoped we could prove to this body was open and evaluates each request on its own merit. We remain hopeful that each of you will rise above the political agendas and vote according to what is the best interest of Gallatin. And I'd like to go ahead and say, if I were Mr. Haynes, I would not want this 28 acres to be put in the city unless I was assured that the fact, I mean, that this PUD development would be developed first. I would defer this to the last thing and discuss the others. We're hoping that it is turned down, and if it's turned down, I think Mr. Haynes wouldn't want it put in the city. Thank you anyway.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Heather Johnson. I live at 1102 Woodvale Drive. Some of you are familiar faces from about eight years ago when we had some sewer backup and drainage issues that took months to resolve, but it did. And some of you are new faces, so I just brought some pictures of what it was like at Coles Ferry and Woodvale Drive when my home in August, well, May and in August, had over 4 foot of sewer and drainage backup. And that's been resolved, but when that land changes, we're very concerned that that's going to happen again, so... And I also provided a picture of currently, thanks to Google, Coles Ferry. Since some of you may not have driven down it lately, you can see how narrow it truly is. And we'd just like you to consider all of us.
Ms. Johnson, I'm very impressed with your signings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'm going to say the public hearing on resolution R-1712... Are you coming forward? It's really hard to see out there, just so y'all know.
Good evening. Mayor Brown, members of city council. My name is Dale Martin. I live in Portland on Airport Road. I've worked at Haganese for 28 years on Airport Road, so it's obvious why I'm up here. I want to speak on behalf of our company, how we have supported Gallatin and this community for a long time. I want to share some facts with you. I'll be brief, but these facts are important. We currently employ 343 people in this community. That's including contractors that we use on a daily basis. 72 Gallatin residents and 150 county residents. Our hourly wage and benefits this year is $27.89 per employee. Our average annual benefits cost per member is $33,561 per year, per employee. We try to take very good care of our employees, provide them the best benefits. Tuition reimbursement, over the past five years, we've paid our employees $103,000 to go to college here locally in the community. Grant funds brought into this community through Haganese over the past five years, we have got from the state of Tennessee $427,000 in grants that go into this community. Property taxes paid, 2016, $855,000; 2017, $658,000; 2018, estimated, $550,000. The city of Gallatin Direct, 2017, we paid the Department of Electricity $14.8 million. 2017, public utilities, we paid $3.8 million. 2018, year-to-date, $6.2 million electricity, $1.7 million in public utilities. If you annualize that out, this year, we will pay the city of Gallatin $19 million in electricity and for public utilities. We have 43 business partners across the county. Our top total 10 local vendors, in 2017, we paid those $2.7 million. This year, if you annualize it out, a conservative number is $3 million. If you look at how we've supported the community, United Way campaigns, the last four years, Financial contributions to Sumter County organizations, specifically Gallatin, 17 organizations, we've donated over $10,000. Gallatin High School Baseball, Gallatin Daycare, Gallatin Lady Wave Softball, Green Wave Soccer, Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee, Habitat for Humanity, just to name a few. If you look at our community partnering and support for the last couple of years, Habitat for Humanity, Home Safe of Sumter County, United Way of Sumter County, Brandywood Golden Living Center right down the street here, Gallatin Daycare Center, Ronald McDonald House, Mission 615, Feed the Homeless, Make-A-Wish, Middle Tennessee, and Gallatin's Annual Christmas Parade. I've worked at Haganese 28 years, and I have seen with my own eyes and my own hands the employees and the management of Haganese sincerely support this community. Not because it's the thing to do or it's the business thing to do, but our employees are from this area, and they care about this community, and they volunteer their time off work to serve this community. So, on behalf of them, as the operations manager of Gallatin, I sincerely ask that you seriously consider not rezoning from industrial to residential. The City of Gallatin Direct, 2017, we paid the Department of Electricity $14.8 million. 2017, Public Utilities, we paid them $3.8 million. 2018, year-to-date, $6.2 million electricity, $1.7 million in Public Utilities. If you annualize that out, this year we will pay the City of Gallatin $19 million in electricity and for Public Utilities. We have 43 business partners across the county. Our top total 10 local vendors, in 2017, we paid those $2.7 million. This year, if you annualize it out, a conservative number is $3 million. If you look at how we've supported the community, United Way campaigns, the last four years, Financial contributions to Sumter County organizations, specifically Gallatin, 17 organizations, we've donated over $10,000. Gallatin High School Baseball, Gallatin Daycare, Gallatin Lady Wave Softball, Green Wave Soccer, Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee, Habitat for Humanity, just to name a few. If you look at our community partnering and support for the last couple of years, Habitat for Humanity, Home Safe of Sumter County, United Way of Sumter County, Brandywood Golden Living Center right down the street here, Gallatin Daycare Center, Ronald McDonald House, Mission 615, Feed the Homeless, Make-A-Wish, Middle Tennessee, and Gallatin's Annual Christmas Parade. I've worked at Hageness 28 years, and I have seen with my own eyes and my own hands the employees and the management of Hageness sincerely support this community. Not because it's the thing to do or it's the business thing to do, but our employees are from this area, and they care about this community. And they volunteer their time off work to serve this community. So on behalf of them, as the operations manager of Gallatin, I sincerely ask that you seriously consider not rezoning from industrial to residential. Consider the residents that are going to be affected, as already been mentioned here, and consider the impact that it's going to have on our ability to grow in the future as a company. We've grown a lot in the last 38 years, and we have plans to grow more. But it's going to be very difficult under those circumstances. So I respectfully ask you to consider not rezoning from industrial to residential. Thank you.
Hi there.
I'm Jeff Wilson. I live at 610 Bay Point since 1997. And currently, I moved to Gallatin in 1979 when the plant was under construction. I'm the vice president for North American Operations, and I have a responsibility for global purchasing. I'm a board member for the Hageness Corporation. I'm also a board member for the Hageness Corporation for Romania and also for our joint venture operation in China. I wanted to thank you this evening for letting us share the reason that we are objecting to the rezoning and that I wanted to also remind you that we've had a number of folks speak with you, my colleague Dale, who was just up a second ago. We've had Stan, we've had Bob Kuhl, who has also been here and talking at different meetings about what this means to our company. But I thought it was important for me to take a few minutes and share with you from a corporate perspective what this type of activity and what this would mean to Hageness. We started the journey with the City Council, the City of Gallatin, near 40 years ago. And it's been a good, it's been a good journey. It's been a city-honored commitment of the industrial zoning. It's been a city-honored commitment to the industrial services and those kind of things that we needed to prosper, and we have done so. The stability of Hageness and the consistency of the pro-business environment that you have provided for us has allowed Hageness to multiply 10 times what we were when we started in '79 and '80 when I first joined the company. So that has been, it's been a very good relationship, I would say, and it's been good, we think, for all of those involved. The purpose, the proposed change in the zoning from one landowner to prosper really at the risk of the adjacent owner seems to suggest a shift to us in the City Council's view of Hageness and how, in fact, we are viewed in the community. It makes us a little anxious, because we are industrial. You've heard from some of the people that are around us, we run 24/7. We've done that for some time now, and we don't see any letup in sight in terms of how our economy and business practices are going. As a company officer, I would be negligent in recommending growth to our business and a community that would be suggesting or thinking that you would be adding cost. And if you don't recognize that by rezoning and bringing in residential and those kinds of things right next to a heavy industrial plant, you will be adding costs not only to us, but you'll be increasing the risk of what is happening to the people that are driving around and those kinds of things. So we want you to consider that and to hear that clearly. When Hageness and any other company plans, we don't plan necessarily for tomorrow, neither do you. We plan for long-term growth, and that has been a very, it's been a very good thing for us. But as this apparent change in the zoning of the property next to us, especially when Hageness was recruited to come and be an industrial company here in Gallatin and provide good-paying jobs and to deal, you know, with all of the local economy that's here, we were encouraged to do that. We found it beneficial. We found Gallatin to be a good place. I've moved here twice. I liked living here. And so I think that everyone would support that. But what we find a problem is that when, in fact, these environments change, that for me, as an officer of the company, to recommend growth, that would be irresponsible. And I think you would recognize that. I would be in the same position as any officer of a company that was looking to grow their industrial base if they could not depend on the commitments and honor what you have already laid before us for this last number of years. So knowing that this zoning is under consideration, you know, I think that when you think about it, you would recognize that the landowner purchased the property knowing what the zoning was. It's difficult for us to understand why you would buy industrial property if, in fact, you wanted residential property. And, you know, it's been clear what it has been for a good number of years, and I think that our view is that changing that upsets the balance between Hageness Corporation and what you are asking us to do as good partners in this community and also allowing us to think about future and long-term growth here, because we believe that that would put our growth at risk. We think that denying the rezoning doesn't hurt the current opportunity for prosper of landowners. We recognize every landowner has a right to rezone. We recognize that you as city council members have a right and a responsibility to look at what the overall condition of our, of our community, my community, and say, hey, what is the best? And so we're asking you not to authorize, not to promote, and not to vote for the rezoning of this industrial property and that you would consider what we have presented for you not only today but over the last 40 years of activity and responsibility. And so I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you hearing this.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you do wish to speak, I'd ask that you come on up this way so that we'll know instead of me almost closing it repeatedly.
I'd like to personally, with the rest of the group, thank the previous two speakers. It just goes to prove that adversity makes strange bedfellows. I received a notice from Green Design.
Would you introduce yourself and give your address, please?
Pardon?
Introduce yourself and give your address.
I'm sorry, Billy Donho, 518 Coles Ferry. Again, to reiterate, we and several others received a letter from Green Design, a Mr. John Leath, who I believe is in the employ of, is it Oak Tree? Inviting us to a public hearing on Tuesday, June 5th. Now, this letter is dated May 14th. The council met on the 15th at 6:00. A lot of us are wondering how this gentleman knew that this action was going to be deferred before the council meeting met on it. I doubt if there's an answer to that question.
I can answer that question. The public hearing was scheduled the, because you'd have to give proper notice on that. And Bill, you might be able, Mr. McCord, you might be able to speak to when the scheduling of the public hearings happened. And I don't, I think we deferred it last, we deferred first reading, but that didn't change the schedule of the public hearings, which is why we have them both tonight. So.
Hard sell.
Pardon me?
Nothing. Strange comment. I'd like to ask all of you to, just a personal note, if you would search your souls and vote on this the way you think your constituents would, not due to some tax base. I think that would go a long way to resolving some issues here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public, on this public hearing? Okay. Again, see, no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on resolution R-1712-64 closed. We move on to item two, which is public hearing on resolution R-1712-65. And again, Councilman Camps.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, annexing one parcel, tax map 134, parcel 001.03, compromising approximately 28.62-plus minus acres located in north and east of Coles Ferry Road into the City of Gallatin. Authorizing annexed parcels to be indicated on official zoning atlas, authorizing assignment of the annexed area to this council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing is open.
Public hearing is now open on resolution R-1712-65. Okay, I see no one wishing to speak, so I will say public hearing on resolution R-1712-65 is closed. Item three is public hearing on ordinance O-1711-95. Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, resoning two parcels totaling approximately 77.43-plus minus acres from industrial restrictive IR or IG Industrial General to R-15 medium-density residential and R-20 low-density residential districts to R-15 medium-density residential planned residential development. R-15 PRD district and approving of a preliminary master development for Langley Estates located east and north of Coles Ferry Road, authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing is open.
Public hearing is now open on ordinance O-1711-95, and I would advise that this is the final public hearing this evening related to Langley Hall. So if there's anyone that's thinking they still want to speak, now would be the time. Okay, I see no one. So I will say public hearing on ordinance O-1711-95 is closed. We'll move on to item four, which is public hearing on ordinance O-1805-29, and for that, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on ordinance number O-1805-29, ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, rezoning a 6.807-plus minus acre parcel from the PG, GC Plan General Commercial District to the R-6 high-density residential district and approving a preliminary master development plan for Blessing Estate. Authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict ordinance, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing.
Public hearing on ordinance O-1805-29 is open. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time.
Hello, my name's Eric Potvin. I live at 718 Blythe Avenue, which is right next to the planned area. I'm not nearly as well-prepared as all these other people. I had some people tell me, show up to a council meeting, ask some questions, get some answers, and go from there. I've lived at the house for five years now. My wife, she's lived there 15. We live right next to this bay, Neuter Alliance, Sumter County. Great people. We love living next to a business. Not many people I know can say that. But we, whenever we heard about this, we read about this R-6 high-density residential zoning, and personally, all I can think of is Nashville and houses stacked on top of each other where you can wash your neighbor's window from the second floor. So I'm not 100% sure what high-density residential means. I know they want to have the lot sizes 6,000 square feet with a 22 to 2400 square-foot house. Doesn't leave much yard space. And also, I know they want to, it's supposed to be workforce-driven. I'm not 100% sure, 100% sure what that means either. And they want to change some ordinances on how much brick the house can have. They want to have less bricks. Seems like they're trying to keep the cost down as much as they can. But we really like living next to a field and a business. We see deer, we see foxes, coyotes, rabbits, squirrels, any number of wildlife you can name. And it's quiet, and it's really nice. And we'd kind of like to not necessarily keep it quiet, but maybe not have 32 houses next to us whenever all the lot sizes are around about twice that size on the back end of that street. I know John Alexander, he lives over behind my house, and that's his neighborhood. And he, I don't know if he understands, but he can kind of see that the community's old. A lot of houses built, I think, back in the '70s. Our house was originally built back in the early 1900s. We have people next door in the field looking with metal detectors all the time. They brought us a Civil War .50 caliber bullet. So there's some history beside us, too, because of the railroad tracks. They told us some good stories. So I'd like you guys to kind of rethink about maybe high-density. You know, it doesn't seem like it would fit in the community over there. And I know I don't know where it goes from here, how much, how many more meetings you have or what, but we'll, I guess, try to keep on the website and keep our ears open. But I appreciate your time. It's nice to see you again, Mayor.
Nice to see you. For your information, next council meeting, when second reading happens, will be two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks? Okay, same time, same place.
That falls right. P-O-T-V-I-N.
She's actually married, me and my wife, in our backyard. So we have a lot of memories.
And they're still married.
Yes, we are. She's still back there, love of my life. So, all right, thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing on ordinance O-1805-29? I see no one, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. And that brings us to item number five, which is second reading on ordinance O-1805-28. And I'm going to ask Councilman Fennell to take this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance updating appropriations for 2016 general obligation bond. I so move.
Okay, I have motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance O-1805-28. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance O-1711-95. Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, rezoning two parcels totaling approximately 77.43-plus minus acres from the IR industrial restrictive IG Industrial General, R-15 medium-density residential, and R-20 low-density residential districts to R-15 medium-density residential planned residential development, R-15 PRD district, and approving a preliminary master plan for Langley House located on the east and north of Coles Ferry Road, authorizing provisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Camp, a second by Councilman Alexander.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we defer this for two weeks.
Okay, so I have a motion to defer by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Camp. And for any of the council that may not know, I think that comes from hearing from them that they've not had a meeting yet with.
That's correct, Paige.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that for everyone's information. So I have a motion to defer and a second. All this in favor of deferring, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, and it will be deferred to the next council meeting, so first reading will happen at that point. That moves us on to item number seven, which is first reading on ordinance O-1806-30. Councilwoman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance appropriating $329,894.14 to amend the 2018 year-end budget adjustments. Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Mayberry, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance O-1806-30. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item A is first reading on ordinance O-1806-31, and Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Municipal Code, Chapter 18 Stormwater, to establish a utility for stormwater management, to establish the function of the utility, to create a special revenue fund and method of funding for the utility, and to fix the effective date of this ordinance. I so move.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this? Seeing no one indicating they wish to discuss, this is first reading on ordinance oh one eight zero six dash thirty-one. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item nine, resolution R one eight zero five dash thirty-five. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution approving the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Sumter County and the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, concerning the annexation of the Langford Farms Development Parcel. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on this?
Just a point of clarification. Susan, this county is in agreement of our original thought about agreeing to support annexation of those affected areas down there on Station Camp.
The areas that the county owns.
On Station Camp?
Yes.
Okay, so they came around. Thank you.
Yes. Any other discussion? This is resolution R one eight zero five dash thirty-five. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, it passes unanimously. Item number ten is resolution R one eight zero five dash thirty-seven. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appoint Ryan Kleiner to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is resolution R one eight zero five dash thirty-seven. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item eleven, resolution R one eight zero six dash thirty-eight, and Councilman Fennell again.
Again, this is a resolution appointing Ryan Kleiner to the Gallatin Health Educational and Housing Facility Board. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? This is resolution R one eight zero six dash thirty-eight. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item twelve is resolution R one eight zero six dash thirty-nine. Councilman Mayberry is recognized.
Yes, ma'am. This is an interesting one. I'm going to read this one, and Susan, you can help explain the however.
She might want Lori to explain.
I'm an IT person.
Yeah, but it looks legal to me when we read this. Anyway, resolution number R one eight zero six dash thirty-nine, and it says, whereas the City of Gallatin desires to enter into a prime software license agreement with Blue Beam Studio, which requires acceptance of the terms of use agreement, end-user license agreement, and online private policy, privacy policy, and whereas there are certain terms in the referenced agreement, including but not limited to indemnification clauses and limitation of liability clauses, that are objectionable and not typically accepted by the city, as such clauses violate Tennessee law for municipal corporations and public policy. However, after negotiations, Blue Beam will not remove such clauses in language from its standard agreements requiring the city council approval of the agreements. And whereas, despite the objectionable language in the agreements and considering that such language violates Tennessee public policy and law for municipal corporations, city council has performed a risk-benefit assessment and determined that the Blue Beam software license agreements are vital to city departments, and I'm sure they are. City council has also determined that it does not intend to waive any defenses it may have with regard to the agreements, but instead, it has determined that should any conflict arise concerning these matters, the city will dispute the legality of any and all objectionable language in the agreements. Motion to approve to get it on the floor.
Most of my Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilman Fennell. It does sound like we're going into the movie-making business, but that's not what this software is for, and it is used by lots of municipalities.
I know exactly what it's for, but.
But I think Ms. High Macaulay can explain the conflicts that we have with.
Yes, there is an indemnification clause that we do not typically allow in our contracts. I will not approve that. There have been other times when this council and department heads felt necessary that we enter into an agreement and felt like it was in the city's best interest to enter into an agreement, and we bring those agreements to council for approval. It is against public policy of the state and state law for municipality to agree to indemnify, because it's due to public funds being used, and we're not appropriating that money. I think Ms. Smiley did try to negotiate with Blue Beam. They refused to take those clauses out of the agreement, and therefore, we are bringing that to you tonight. You have approved these clauses in the past. I do think it's vital software. I can't speak to that. Ms. Smiley would need to explain to you why it's needed and necessary.
I paid, for thirty-eight years, I paid a lot of license fees, so I know, you know, Microsoft and all of that for the bank. However, I'm all for it. I'm just, oh, the legality. How much money, because we're self-insuring, basically.
Absolutely.
Okay, what this is. How much money are we spending? Are we self-insuring if this company does not provide, appears to default in their service? How much actual money do we have at risk?
So Lori Smiley, CIO, I don't know that we have an answer to how much money it might cost us in the event that something went.
Now, what's our contract cost?
Our contract is sixteen thousand dollars.
How much?
About sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's the total amount. Well, we got enough to self-insure for that amount, and that's very important, because if this was, you know, a great deal amount that we're self-insuring upon default, then, you know, that's another issue. That's all the questions I have.
Well, I have a question, Ms. Smiley. My concern would be that, you know, somehow we'd get in some disagreement with them, and they would continue service. Do you, we have assurance that we would still be able to retain our information, our data and all of that?
That is in the contract. So we will remain owner, you know, have ownership of the data. They will provide it to us in a manner in which we can read it, which in the past has not always happened. So I think, you know, we were protected there.
And you guys have confidence, because there are municipalities throughout the country using this?
Yeah, that was kind of the surprise that the attorney had, was that, I mean, there are multiple organizations or agencies within the state of Tennessee that are using this software as well. And so, as well as across the country. So the fact that the state of Tennessee doesn't typically allow the indemnification clauses, and yet, you know, this keeps getting signed, but I have to say, too, that this happens when you download software for use and click "I agree" to the end-user license agreement without, you know, if you read it all through, it's there, too. So we also had this with the Compete software, and we had some clauses that they didn't want us to, or they would not negotiate on, so we went ahead and went forward with that. So.
Tells me we have a very attentive attorney.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ite.
Can I ask, what is the objectional language that is not apparent? So, and also, so our attorney is saying she doesn't believe we should go with this, but Lori, you're saying that we should.
Let me clarify. I'm not saying, I disagree that we shouldn't have this software. The objectional language is indemnification, so that if we were to get into a dispute with them, we have to indemnify them for their cost. That's what it's objectional, because it's public funds. We haven't appropriated that money. It's against public policy. Typically, when you have these type of contracts, and they have lots of contracts with governments, they usually have a government contract, and that's why we were surprised they would not offer a government contract, taking that language out, or at least letting us add the limiting language to the extent permitted by law. Sometimes we can get around it by adding language to the extent permitted by law. We know it's not permitted by law. We can add that and go about, you know, our way, but they would not agree to any modification of their standard contracts. That's why I'm bringing it before you. I don't have the authority to allow the city to go forward with the contract without approval of city council. Sorry.
Lori, how many years are we entering into this agreement, contract?
So you buy the licenses, and then you pay an annual maintenance agreement for as long as you want to continue using the product, the software?
But that's probably greater than sixteen thousand, the maintenance agreement, probably.
Now, maintenance, gosh, I didn't bring that with me. The maintenance, I think, is only thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
I mean, it's less than five thousand, I think, a year or so.
You know, if worse happened, and I'm sure it won't, but if it did, just what financially we would be looking at, you know, if we got into litigation? Thanks, Lori.
Any more discussion on this? Okay, this is resolution R one eight zero six dash thirty-nine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us down to other business. So if anyone on this council has some business to bring forward, please do so at this time. No one? Now we're on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So if there's anyone here this evening that'd like to speak to anything that's not on this evening's agenda, now would be your time. Again, we ask that you come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and we welcome you to speak with us.
My name is Louise Hines, and I'm five thirty Lincoln Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. And I'm on here about Brooks, four-eleven Brooks Drive. They give me till the last of May for they demolish it, but I'm asking for more time, because when I get somebody to demolish this house, I want to do it myself. I don't want the city to do it, because the city charged too much. And I've been to see the mayor four times, I've been to see you four times, but each time, they tell me that you not in. I come in the morning time.
Could be the case.
But you not here, but you not here.
That's likely the case.
And you not here each time I come to see you. And I talked to three different ladies, and I call, I don't like to call nobody's house, but I call your house. I didn't get no answer either, because they said leave the mess on the answering machine, but nobody returned the call.
I hope we offered to make an appointment with you, because that's usually the best course for a meeting, so.
I am talking about John D., too. John D. and the mayor. I'm talking about both of you. John D. and the mayor, y'all the hardest two people to catch out. I talked to a lady named Michelle, and I talked to, a man was in your office, he took me over to Michelle's office. When he took me over there, another lady took me another office. Then another lady come in, and I said, I am not talking to you. I'm talking to these two ladies right here, so you gone back in your office?
I'm sure people were trying to help.
But I didn't need her help, because I already had two ladies in there talking to me, so I didn't need the third party. All I want was asking for more time on this.
Okay, well, this would be the proper venue in going through the legal department, and I'm going to ask Ms. High Macaulay to address your concerns.
Okay, so what do I do?
She's going to address your concerns.
Well, I just wanted to give council a little bit of a background on this. I have spoken with you on the phone a couple of times, and I know you've come to my office, and you came last week, and I'm sorry, I was out last week, and I think you talked with Latisha, who's the staff attorney in my office. This building was declared dangerous back in November. Because of a lot of different circumstances, the city has not been able to get this demolished. At this point, they are ready to move forward, have been ready to move forward. During them preparing to go forward, we found out that, at the time, we thought that there was a contract for sale, and someone else was going to demolish the building. So we did tell her that you can have till the end of May. We'll give you some extra time. It should have already been demolished months ago, but because of weather and some other circumstances, we've not been able to do that. So we told her, you know, you have until the end of May, because it is a dangerous building. I understand now she's wanting more time, and I don't know what timeframe that is, and we can talk with Mr. Wilkinson, who can tell us. I think that the city, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is ready now to move forward with the demolition. Is that correct?
I want you to tell me what kind of dangerous building, what danger is it in? Nobody live back there. It was two houses beside mine, they gone. There's no house back there but that. It's one way in that street to a dead end, and one way out. So what business, people got back there?
We, Ms. Hines, respectfully, we've been through the dangerous building hearing process, and it was determined to be a dangerous building. It's not just about anybody being around there, it's about someone that may.
Dangerous to who around there? There's nobody around there.
That's kind of said and done. I mean, that process is over, so we're at the demolition piece of it, and I think, I don't know if it was this property or another one of yours that we.
Okay, you already done that, so.
But the, I mean, the council has allowed an extension of this property. So I would ask, at this point, Mr. Wilkinson to tell us the timeframe that you're looking at, as to when you think you can get to it and potentially give her to that point.
As soon as the person that gonna tear it down can find somewhere to take the material. He gotta find a place to, you know, when he tear it down, to take the wood and stuff when he tear it up.
Would you let Mr. Wilkinson tell us what kind of timeframe they're looking at from a city perspective? He's behind you.
Zach Wilkinson, Public Works Director. The property that's remaining, there's some asbestos that has to be removed, so it would depend on how quickly the contractor can get back in there to remove the asbestos at that point. It would be ready to, we could get it within a week or two.
I was gonna get someone else to tear it down, not them.
That's if the city did it.
Well, it's my house and my property. I don't have no right to say anything about it. Don't I have a right to? Okay, then I have a right to say something if it's my property.
Please, you're to address the council, not for Mr. Wilkinson.
Okay, okay. Mayor, may I have a right to have something to say about it?
You can say whatever you want to. This is public comment.
But can you give me more time?
Absolutely, yeah. No, 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 no. I thought you meant more time to speak. No, I cannot give you more time on. This council could allow that, but I don't know that that's the posture that we're in. Any comments?
What do you think about John D.?
Don't you think anybody has the right to have time on their own property? That's so you don't have no right on your own room, if you don't have no right for that?
No, Mr. Blackmore, first of all, let me apologize if you've been trying to contact me and hadn't been able. Always call me on my cell phone.
Don't know your cell phone, no.
Four one nine eight three eight three. Write it down, so you always have it.
Okay.
House phone, my wife don't allow me to answer the phone, but you can call me on my cell phone.
And another thing, whoever called me from this city office threatening me on this, stop calling me. They called me three and four times a day, and it's from the lawyer's office of the city council. That's where it come from.
I'm very sorry, again, they're trying to help you.
Well, threats ain't no good. Threats are no good. You don't threaten nobody.
And I have spoken with you, and others have.
But someone calling three and four times a day, and if you think on line, come to my house and look at my answering machine.
Okay, well, I'm not aware of anyone. I will ask my staff not to call you three and four times a day, and I wasn't aware that was happening.
Come to my office, you think on line, come to my house, I can show you my answering machine.
I think they were just trying to reach you. Mr. Alexander, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Blackmore, you say you need more time?
Hines, H-I-N-D-S.
Hines, I'm sorry.
That's my maiden name.
I apologize, Ms. Hines. I've been knowing you as Ms. Blackmore, but I apologize. But you spoke of needing more time. What frame, you said more time, are you talking about weeks, months?
I don't know how much time you gonna give.
I mean, well, first of all, it's come from a request. You know, you would say, I would like to have a couple more weeks, I would like to have another month, I would like to have whatever, and then, you know, we would take that into consideration.
Well, I'd like to have whatever months you give me, how many times you give.
But see, that really don't help us, because we've been through the process. But if you come back, you know, like you're doing now, and say, I've got somebody that's gonna do this, but I need two more weeks, I need three more weeks, I need thirty days, then we have something to grab hold of.
Okay.
That's what we need.
I don't know how much time.
I mean, the person that's gonna tear the house down and move the stuff, how long do they say?
Thirty days.
Okay, that's fine. Thirty days help you?
Thirty what?
Thirty days.
I try. They find somewhere, if thirty days, they can find somewhere to take the material, have to tear it down.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we give her thirty days, additional days, because we've already been through the process, but if you think you can do it, I'll make a motion that we'll give her thirty days.
From the state or from?
From the city.
No, from this date. Thirty days from today?
Yes, 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 of course, from today.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Hayes to give Ms. Heinz until, what would, that would be July 5th. Right?
May I ask a question, clarification, so that we won't have, maybe we won't have to go through this again in 30 days? John D., was you kind of thinking that if it wasn't torn down or removed or whatever to the city's satisfaction at the end of that 30-day, the 31st day, Zack would be over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, you know, I'm just gonna honor her request. She asked for more time, and I, yeah.
But on 31 days, so that we just, it's over, right?
It's over.
Okay. Just clarifying.
Mr. Camp, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on non-agenda-related items this evening? I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so we will declare public comment on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Hayes. All in favor, please say aye. Everybody have a lovely evening. Be safe going home. We look forward to seeing you back here next time.